With your host, Andrew Donaldson. This is Heard Tell.
Ah, it's Monday. Aren't you excited about it? I'm Andrew Donaldson. Welcome to Heard Tell. It is February the 21st, year of our Lord 2022, President's Day, for those of you that observe it. Hope you and yours are well wherever you are across the street or around the world. Thrilled that you're with us. Lot to cover today. As always on the program, we got a cool story out of Brazil, how technology and social media and things like online video games, they're not bad for your health. They're actually raising people up out of some really wicked and oppressive poverty. We'll cover that story. Also touching on two running stories that we've been covering frequently on this program. One is the Brian Flores NFL story that we touched on a few weeks. There's a huge update in that story. The other is we're kind of keeping one eye on the Russia and Ukraine situation. As of the time of this program, there has not been an invasion yet, but there's a lot of rumblings, wars and rumors of wars. We're going to cut through some of the noise on that. Also, some of the noise on how that is being covered. Also, great story to end the program. How far would you go for charity? Would you go up a 26-story building? More specifically, would you go down the front of a 26-story building? We'll cover that story in a little bit. But first, let's start with the school board decision out in San Francisco. It got a lot of coverage, made a lot of noise, and it sure does appear that most people kind of missed what actually happened here. So I'm going to be reading from ordinary-times.com, our friend OG Jay Bird, who does great work there. Make sure you're following him on the Twitter and reading him at ordinary-times.com, one of the OGs, the longest, most commented person in the history of Ordinary Times, by the way, from the San Francisco Chronicle. "San Francisco voters overwhelmingly supported the ouster of three San Francisco school board members Tuesday in the city's first recall election in nearly 40 years. The landslide decision means Board President Gabriela Lopez and members Allison Collins and Fawag Maliga," I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that, "will officially be removed from office and replaced by a merril appointment 10 days after the election is officially accepted by the Board of Supervisors. The new San Francisco school board members are likely to take office in mid-March. The three were the only school board members who had served long enough to be eligible for a recall." Now to Jay Bird's writing, "Those are the facts and they are not in dispute. They explore the why this sort of thing happened. There are a handful of narratives that are competing with each other. On the one side, the argument is that this was a deep pockets of astroturf alt-right going out of their way to purchase an election. Apparently $2 million went into this pre-recall, pro-recall effort. On the other, the argument is that this was a backlash against the San Francisco school board that was more interested in performative displays than actually doing the job a school board is elected to do. The two stories that I went to in order to get a basic idea of what really happened came from two divergent sources. One from Matt Welsh at Reason Magazine, and the other one from Clara Jeffrey from Mother Jones. Those are two organizations that usually do not see eye to eye. Reason, unsurprisingly, explores the whole school naming thing for a while before going to the nut graph. Yet, most," this is a quote from Reason, "most San Francisco public middle schools and high schools remain closed through the first half of 2021, even as private schools all around them and public schools in much of the area were open." But this is the contention, Jay points this out, this is also from Reason, that what really happened was my position on the board and my right to free speech and incoherent from Maliga saying things like, "Being the first Pacific Islander on the school board and elected city official, I'm taking up the charge and making sure the foundational piece is in place so that we can begin to see improvement in the classroom for Pacific Islanders." Lopez, who was removed, here's a quote from her, "I believe we were able to open schools for our priority students as soon as it was safe to do so." Collins said this, "I filed the lawsuit because I needed to protect myself, my family, the work of the Board of Education, my position on the board and my right to free speech were affirmed." Welch concludes, "Even in San Francisco, that if you are against us, your with Trump defense has stopped working," which is what these folks were claiming. But you know Welch works for Reason of all magazines. If you want someone with less of an ideological tilt, you need to go to a much less right-leaning magazine like Mother Jones, which is the opposite of right-leaning. Clara Jeffrey opens by quoting Politico, the LA Times, in a tweet from the Bulwark Online, quoting from Clara Jeffries, "Within minutes, the results being announced, national outlets and pundits of all stripes begin breathlessly trumping this as a blow against excessive wokeness, a vote to return to normal, a three-alarm warning for Democrats," those are all in quotes, "a parental backlash for pursuing the renaming of a school and other progressive policies changes." But she goes on to say this, quote, "Kind of not really. If I had to boil it down, it was a vote to put performance over performativeness." She then rattles off what the recall really was about, remote learning, school names, the murals, lulls in missions, the budget, the consultants, LGBTQ representation, Allison Collins' racist tweets, the $87 million lawsuit, and finally, the meetings themselves. Seriously, read the article on Mother Jones, Jay Bird says. She goes into detail over each three, but here's where my ears perked up, and so did mine. In summation, this recall was a vote about a lot of issues, but overall, it was a vote against incompetence. The coalition that came together to recall the board members was extremely unique patchwork. Some cared deeply about lulls, some were others down on the list. And yes, San Francisco parents were anxious about a school reopening and safety plans, but what really set them off was that the board had no plan and that it stopped Matthews and other officials from making a plan. All these issues are fraught and complex and require care and consensus. This is from Mother Jones. Instead, it felt like the board was playing politics ineptly. They prioritized performativeness over performance and they brushed away any critique as coming from people who were insufficiently radical. See that last part? Back to Jay Bird writing, and I agree with Jay Bird 100% here. "They brushed away any critique as coming from people who are insufficiently radical," that's quote. I hold that up against Welch's article where he says, "One of the most definitive conclusions about the recall is that the blame Donald Trump strategy just will not work anymore for embattled Democratic politicians." I noticed that for all the places where the two narratives differ with each other, there's a lot of overlap on that particular point. A silly little election about San Francisco school board does not necessarily mean anything at the national level. But if there was anywhere in the country where stuff like accusing anyone opposed to progress as being allies of Donald Trump would work, I'd say it'd be there, and it seems to have stopped working, and November is coming. The point here, and I think Jay Bird's on to something, as is Clara from Mother Jones. Effectiveness is always going to outweigh performative. It doesn't matter what your ideological label is or even your party affiliation. At some point, when it's something like a school board where it involves people's kids, they want you to do the dang job. And if you don't do the dang job, they're going to get you out of there. And no amount of performative politics or slapping labels or appealing to ideology is going to help you once they come for your job because they messed with your kids or they messed with your schools or they messed with your city. What do we talk about a lot on this program? Government accountability. The recall was an exercise in government accountability. Now, you can apply a lot of application and lessons to that about various reasons, but there's only one interpretation. They didn't do the job, and the people in San Francisco had had enough, and out they went. More power to them. We should do that more often at every level of government. More Heard Tell right after this. Ah, welcome back to Heard Tell. I'm Andrew Donaldson. Thank you for staying with us. Want to update you on two stories that we've continued to cover and we've covered before on here. First one, remember, we had our buddy Josh G. Buckholder on the show a few weeks ago, talking about all the stuff in the NFL going on. Brian Flores and his lawsuit. He was a former coach of the Miami Dolphins. We speculated as to what his future might be, since there was some fears of him being retaliated against or maybe having things, since he's actually suing the league for things like racism, racial preferences, and also some really serious allegations about being paid by his owner, Stephen Ross, to throw games and lose as much as possible. These are serious accusations. The lawsuit is ongoing. However, he does have a job. He was hired by the Pittsburgh Steelers over the weekend. This is, makes a lot of sense. The Steelers are probably one of the most stable organizations in the NFL. They're not just on the field, but their front office, their ownership. It's a very, very solid organization. Their head coach, Mike Tomlin, of course, is one of the few black coaches in the NFL, so a whole lot of things line up to make this make sense. He's also a great coach. Steelers are known for their defense. He's going to be a quarterback and assistant head coach for the Steelers. So that's the update on that story. The other story we're watching with one eye, in fact, we were kind of debating on how to cover this over the weekend because we were waiting to see what happened. Russia and Ukraine, as of the time of this program, there has not been an invasion yet. There's a lot of back and forth stuff going on in the disputed regions of Ukraine where the Russians are probably running some ops to try to provoke the Ukrainians and/or distract folks. It's still a very tense situation. Couple of things we want to touch on real quick about it. Again, as of the time of this program, there has not been an invasion. We're still hopeful that there won't be a war. Nobody wants a war. This would not be, this would be a bloody affair. The Ukrainians will fight. This is their homeland. This isn't Crimea where they pulled back and kind of let the Russians have it for all intensive purposes. There will be bloodshed. It will be bloody. It will be a mess. So we don't want war. We hope this is brinksmanship. We hope that it doesn't come to war one way or the other, but if it does, we will have to pay very close attention and be on our guard because there's so much propaganda out there right now. Let's be very, very clear here. Russia is the aggressor. Ukraine didn't do anything wrong. Ukraine and/or the West has done nothing to provoke the Russian government led by thug dictator Vladimir Putin into needing to invade Ukraine. The only reason he is going to invade Ukraine if he does so or tries to do a faux invasion to take over part of Ukraine and try to train the leadership so it's like Belarus and basically a puppet government for him is because he needs the country economically and traditionally it hurts their feelings that Ukraine, which was the breadbasket of the old Soviet Union, the crown jewel, some people have called it, is no longer under their control. That's why he wants it. He needs the economic reasons to prop up himself and to keep trouble from spreading back home. He needs the prestige of it. He needs those things. There is no security threat out of Ukraine to Russia. Those are all lies. Don't buy them. And if you're on the West and you're reporting them and you're spouting them off and you're covering for Vladimir Putin as a bad actor, that's on you. I don't care why you're doing it. You're helping him. Don't help the evil one. It's a very simple life thing. Second thing we need to cover, a lot of coverage in the West about the Munich Conference. The Munich Defense Conference happens just about every year. It's a high-profile event. A lot of coverage in America over what President Biden's doing. There was some coverage over Vice President Harris's speech. Listen. Vladimir Putin is not listening to anything that's going on in Munich and what's going on in Washington DC with President Biden and others. He's not really paying attention to that either. He already has a measure of those people. He has a measure of the leadership in Europe. He is gauging whether or not he wants to invade the country based on whether he wants to deal with the bloodshed, the potential loss, the prestige hit if it doesn't succeed. Those sorts of things is what he's thinking about. He does not care what Joe Biden thinks about it. I'm sorry. I know he's our president. That's just the truth. He's not respected by Vladimir Putin. He's not scared of us. Russia has to save face here. If they can figure out a way to climb down off this ledge without losing face, they may do it. I don't know the answer to this question, but that's just how the Russians work. If you embarrass them, they're going to do something to try to show how strong they are. I don't know the answer in Ukraine, but I know Ukraine is the victim here and Russia is the aggressor. Let's keep that crystal clear going forward, no matter what happens. More Heard Tell right after this. Ah, welcome back to Heard Tell Show. Been wanting to do this for a while. Finally got it scheduled. Very happy to have her. One of the very best of our Young Voices contributors. Thrilled to have her. She has written all over the place. She's been out busy on the road, testifying and doing other freelance work. Finally got her here. Happy to talk to her. Gabriella Hoffman, how are you, man?
I'm good. Good to speak with you. Thank you for having me.
Thrilled to have you. One of the fun things about having to schedule you for a while is you've kind of stacked up things. We want to talk to you about it, so let's jump right in. Let's start with the National Labor Relations Board. This is something, before we get to the issue at hand, I want to go back and define it because people, this was a hot-button issue a couple of years ago during the Obama administration. We had the go-around where he did the recess appointments. That actually ended up going to the Supreme Court. But the last few years, people haven't talked about the National Labor Relations Board quite as much as they had in the past. Define it for us. Give us the nomenclature and why has that become such a politicized thing in the last decade or so?
Yeah, I actually haven't written about this yet, but I just finished an op-ed to be printed. But in my examination into the National Labor Relations Board, it's an independent federal agency. It's supposed to mediate whenever there's an issue with private companies and even labor unions too, and they try to resolve labor conflicts, things of that sort. And there's this back and forth, if you look into it, between whether or not the board has the authority to regulate independent contractors as employees or not. And there's been several cases to determine that have been decided. And I think harkening back to the point that you talked about in terms of the Obama administration, it was actually deemed one of the most partisan National Labor Relations Board because they were overstepping their bounds in two cases. One is the FedEx case that first came out in 2009, which essentially said that the drivers that were working with FedEx were essentially independent contractors. And then they had another decision in 2014, which tried to strip away that language, and then in 2017, affirmed that a common law test, which allows for leeway in terms of entrepreneurial categories, I forget the exact name. But FedEx was able to label their drivers as independent contractors because of the nature of their work in terms of kind of the entrepreneurial aspect to it. So it kind of put it to bed, and then the shuttle case in 2019 affirmed the common law test to essentially say that most drivers or people who work in ride-sharing apps are largely independent contractors. So stemming from those cases and some other cases now, we have this Atlanta Opera case that was brought about by a union of hairstylists and makeup artists to essentially make those people unionize. So all these different labor unions, big and small, bring these cases before the board. And they have largely tried to rule in their favor to make it harder for people who are by all definitions, independent contractors, to identify that way. So it's this tussling back and forth, even though the courts have stepped in and said, actually, the board is exceeding their authority. These workers are independent contractors, not employees, given the existing kind of language we have, the fact that the language falls under the Fair Labor Standards Act and not the National Labor Relations Act. So there's a lot of back and forth to go over it, but we will see a largely politicized board, I think, under the Biden administration again, because now it's a three-to-two Democratic majority. They certainly share the aims of the Biden administration and the Labor Department to reclassify, or in their words, to help address rampant misclassification in their eyes of independent workers who largely don't see themselves as exploited, helpless, and needing rescuing from the federal government, but they somehow believe that's the case.
That's the case law side of it, but we're also grown adults. We understand the political side of this is the Democratic Party is traditionally locked arms and allies with labor unions. Right now, the Democratic Party has, of course, all three. They have the House, the Senate, and the presidency. So you knew. And Biden is a real old-school Democrat, so he loves talking big labor. It's just ingrained into him. That's who he is. Nothing wrong with that. This is the kind of politician he is. But you were talking about this on Twitter when you were talking about this labor task force stuff. Kind of the underlying thing here is as much as we talk about labor unions, they're, the gig economy, lack of a better way to say it, the freelancers, they're three times as big as the labor unions now, and they really, really just need to figure out a way to how to handle that, and they're trying to do it through the power of government.
Essentially, that's what they're doing. They're not taking into account worker concerns and considerations. It seems like they're largely just listening to big labor interests, which have an oversized influence in American politics, and they don't represent workers at large. They have an outsized, I would say, influence in that, and certainly the Biden administration is giving a nod to these special interest groups. They help put them to power in terms of backing them financially and assuring them that their policy aims would be advanced, and they're trying to deliver on those aims. So there's kind of a overlap between big labor interests, the Biden administration, the Labor Department. And even though a lot of freelancers have obviously respectfully disagreed and asked them to reconsider plans, it seems like the concerns fall on deaf ears. Marty Walsh, the Labor Secretary, has acknowledged that the largest share of growth in the workforce, despite the pandemic, was in the self-employment kind of sector of this burgeoning economy. Yet he still said, "We have to address worker misclassification." I think it was last spring. He said, "We have too many instances," I'm paraphrasing, "of worker misclassification. There are too many people who identify as independent contractors who should be employees." And we see this echoed in the wage and labor, wage in our division, excuse me, Administrator David Weill, who wants to return for a second time at the agency to rekind of litigate what he previously did and kind of expand upon putting restrictions on worker classification or worker characterization in this instance. So it seems like they're all in sync. And they're not really listening to the workers, I would say, the, the growing share of workers who reject what they're pushing, especially in this labor task force. And I had talked about this with Independent Women's Forum and a little bit with Young Voices about how these workers, freelance, flexible workers are largely feeling ignored. I've talked to a lot of people in the freelancing space, believe it or not, a lot of Democrats who feel very voiceless in their party because it seems like they're not listening to them despite the evidence that they've presented that this would really, especially an ABC test, which will replace a common law test that is currently used by the IRS and also different agencies to determine a worker's classification. You see that it's actually bringing together people of all political interests to say that they're kind of exceeding their powers. They're not listening to workers and they can't regulate workers in a one-size-fits-all approach.
Yeah, and let's speak to that one-size-fits-all approach for a second because, to be fair, there are lots of companies that abuse the independent contractor labor to not pay benefits, to not do wages. That does get abused by companies. The thing here, though, is I don't know that a one-size-fits-all, well, we can just unionize the entire gig economy is going to work because the gig economy organically grew because it went into, lack of a better term, gaps of employment, people that wanted more freedom, people that wanted more independent thing, companies rose through those things, putting this old solution across the board onto a new and burgeoning sector of the economy that's growing by leaps and bounds. And not everybody in the gig economy is miserable. A lot of people like that flexibility. You and me are in the gig economy. We're both freelance writers and media people. How did, I think this may be just one of those things where we're trying to do an old solution to a new problem, and you're just going to end up making a bigger mess. Am I wrong there?
No, you're absolutely correct. They're still using guidelines to me that seem largely reminiscent of the 1930s. Labor law of the 1930s and the scenarios that we have right now, very different. It's not the 1930s anymore. It's 2022. We have a lot of different metrics at play. We have worker kind of makeup that is very different. We don't thankfully see as much misclassification as possible. Certainly, some companies may engage in it, and if they are abusing those powers, they can have those situations rectified and be targeted, or not targeted, but essentially reformed if they have been engaging in those abuses, but they want to take it a step further. And we saw this play out in California where they said, "This is to essentially address," in California's Assembly Bill Five, "to rectify a huge, huge problem. It's only going to affect a small slither of the gig economy, the rideshare workers in their eyes, but it in fact extended well beyond rideshare workers who they claimed were missing out on benefits for healthcare and dental and other things that they were wholly misclassified under the eyes of California labor law." But it, of course, like every law with unintended consequences or intended consequences, I think in this case, they saw successful, highly skilled independent workers who don't really hinge their work output on the need for benefits or the need to unionize. They saw their workload shrink demonstrably. I know on the offhand that a lot of people had to either give up gig work or freelance work altogether. They had to move to a different state. They had contracts canceled on them because people from out of state were very scared about what California's law would entail and said, "Well, we have to unfortunately cancel your contract because of the new labor law that California has into place." So a lot of people in California saw a huge loss of work. I think it's probably upwards of at least a million people. There's no key figures yet, but I know at least that figure, a lot of people in either a permanent fashion or at least a partial fashion have seen their freelancer livelihood eroded in some capacity, and I wish they did have those numbers more, but I was told by people that at least a million people have seen some sort of setback in terms of their employment status and, and kind of their success as freelancers. And we see these kind of copycat efforts in other blue states. In Virginia, and actually in your state of West Virginia, I know the governor signed into law last year, probably one of the strongest independent contractor worker laws in place to ensure that the IRS standard and the common law standard would be adhered to and that companies, especially labor unions, those who work, companies that work with labor unions or labor unions themselves, would not abuse claims of misclassification to displace independent workers from the workforce. And Virginia is starting to see that language too. Like you had mentioned, I was in the process of testifying and they at last minute carried the bill over to next year. It's a good thing so the Democrat-controlled Senate wouldn't kill the bill, which is ripe for potential. And they wanted, the governor's office, I was told, wanted to rewrite it or lend some commentary a bit more to make it stronger. So there is an interest from this new administration in Virginia to pass it. But you see obviously California and a lot of states responding to California in the opposite direction to protect independent workers because I think red state governors largely recognize that this is a burgeoning workforce. There's largely no misclassification of very limited instances when it's an independent worker who voluntarily engages in a contract with companies, probably like you. I voluntarily enter agreements with companies. It's mutually agreed to terms. I get to decide and agree to the payment. If I want benefits, I can set aside money myself. That's not really something I hinge my workout, work output on because that's very minor. If I wanted to do that, I would have stayed in a nine-to-five job. But essentially, I think people, especially big labor, misunderstands why people go into this, and I think they're kind of ignoring where the trends are going economically speaking, especially in the wake of the pandemic, we see a lot of people leaving nine-to-five jobs in what has been billed as the Great Resignation or now the Great Shuffle. And people have cited flexibility, more free arrangements, more freedom to choose who to work with, your work hours, things of that sort, and having more happiness and better well-being, mental well-being, things of that sort, more time with family. A lot of people have cited those factors as reasons for them leaving traditional workplaces for these more flexible work arrangements, or maybe even traditional jobs now allowing for remote and more flexible options. I've seen that some companies are doing that as well, recognizing that they risk losing workers to flexible work arrangements if they don't adopt these more flexible type of scenarios to their workers. So I would say the regulators are going against the trends. They're failing to see that the regulatory framework of the 1930s does not apply to the regulatory framework of today. And I think you see a lot of workers telling regulators, "Do not regulate us out of existence. Do not reclassify us because if you do, it'll have a lot of very bad consequences for people, for the GDP, for people's well-being, and for just kind of this new and kind of last, I would say, iteration of entrepreneurship that you see, pure unadulterated entrepreneurship that can take someone from being self-employed to running a small brick-and-mortar shop to maybe one day running a big business."
Talking to Gabriella Hoffman. When we come back, we're going to dig into that labor just a little bit. There's an appointee that's very important, trying to get into the Labor Department that we're going to discuss. Also, talk about something not labor-related. She's got a little bit of conservation work she's been doing. Talk about that to finish up. We'll be back with Gabriella Hoffman of Young Voices right after this on Heard Tell. Ah, welcome back to Heard Tell. We're continuing our conversation with Gabriella Hoffman. All right, here's, here's something that we get into with social media a lot. People want to equate, especially people that don't want to argue in good faith, that, "Well, if you're against unions, you're against labor and you're against workers." I'm not against union. You'd mentioned it. I'm from West Virginia. Look, if anybody ever needed a union, it was the coal miners. And talk about the 30s, even before that, Blair Mountain back in the teens and 20s. It's not that I'm against the unions. I'm against the current attenuation of big labor unions in America as they exist now where they have the kind of antiquated model like you talked about, and it becomes a power structure. And now that you have a power structure like that, that is combining with the force of the federal government to give them what they want. My fear is these labor unions, and I think we have some data to back this up. When you talk about something like the gig economy, you're going to be trading one poor taskmaster for a new taskmaster that's even got less ability to fight against it.
Yeah, with the discussion about enhancing big labor. So you've probably heard about the Protecting the Right to Organize Act, which is kind of the federal companion to California's AB 5. And this would be a complete restructuring of employment law, labor law as we know it. And I think a lot of us argue that it would take us back to the 1930s. And again, it doesn't match kind of the standards of where labor law and where labor trends are going. And the PRO Act, in addition to kind of reclassifying, or in their words, misclassifying, addressing misclassification concerns of workers, they would essentially repeal right to work. So states wouldn't be able to operate, I think there are 27 states right now in the country, West Virginia and Virginia being one of them, that allow their workers to not have to join a union as a prerequisite for employment. So they would essentially make it so you repeal right to work and to have your employment hinge on union membership. Additionally, you would give greater oversight to labor unions under the PRO Act if it were to pass. That would essentially make it so union bosses would essentially dictate the affairs of employer-employee relations. So an employer will essentially have to give worker information to these union bosses who are now intermediaries in businesses if this hypothetical situation were to play out. And we don't know exactly what information they would obtain, would they obtain a worker's social security number, their birth date, home address, bank account statements? Essentially, how much power are we giving them and how much private information are they going to be able to have at their disposal? So a lot of critics of the PRO Act have said, "There's a lot of privacy concerns, especially giving labor unions more emboldened power to carry out these actions." So there's privacy concerns. There's obviously free association concerns. And essentially, the unions would gain or seek to gain or potentially even become like $3 billion richer. And they're a pretty influential financially wealthy welfare organization. That's how they're classified, I guess, in the nonprofit space. And they would essentially become more wealthier, all the while disempowering a workforce that's about three times as larger as them. So this would give unions unchecked power. You wouldn't be able to contest a case against them. You wouldn't be able to withdraw yourself from a union. They would make it extremely hard for you to not have your work be conditional on union membership. So everything would be at the behest of unions. And you wouldn't be able to prove otherwise, or you wouldn't be able to identify otherwise, even if you're self-employed. They want everyone, I hate to say it, to return back to a traditional job, a nine-to-five job, even though people are willingly and voluntarily leaving nine-to-five jobs. You can't force people back into those arrangements. And we saw the pandemic actually give license to the fact that you can go away from a traditional saw the pandemic actually give license to the fact that you can go away from a traditional job and you don't need a union. And you probably have seen the headlines where even though there was often discussions about different companies allowing their workers to organize or different worker organization efforts, efforts to collectively bargain in Starbucks and other different conglomerates, we saw a shrinking of the union workforce in this country over a year. It went from 10.8% of the workforce to 10.3%, despite the big media push, despite big labor supposedly being more emboldened, despite uh a lot of the puff pieces and the positive stories about this is people have a positive view of unions, but for some reason, the the union workforce is shrinking. And there's a disconnect between the argument because how could such glowing, raving reviews of these entities, which if you look at the polling, they're actually more mixed. And if you look at kind of more bipartisan polling, not polls conducted by labor unions, it's actually more mixed or kind of in the negative for labor unions. People don't want to change what currently already exists, including Democrats who may be supportive of big labor aims. And you see a lot of independents and of course, Republicans say that unions shouldn't be given more power. And this is evidenced through a Forbes tape poll that was released last June about the PRO Act. And you actually saw pretty bipartisan widespread support about opposing different tenants, the right to work revoking component, the ABC test implementation, and giving unions more access to private information. And so that carries over to uh the nominee who we were kind of alluding to earlier, David Weil, who wants to return back to his wage and hour division administrator role. And he would like to implement aspects of the PRO Act, especially this ABC test when it comes to worker classification efforts. He also has a bone to pick with the freelance economy in the greater scheme of things. He calls this the fissured workplace. He sees it in a very negative light. So he's not a friend, and I don't think he'd be a fair arbiter of labor law with respect to this. I think he would create law and regulation that would make it harder for people to independently work and also for franchises and franchisees to operate as well. He has had a bone to pick with franchisees as well. Um and he also had uh kind of the gumption to extend the overtime payroll under the Obama administration and the courts put him in check. So he wants to kind of play around with those three things as well. So a lot of people in the independent workforce, whether they're independent contractors or they're franchisees or franchise business owners, they'll have to be very concerned about his potential return to the Department of Labor again, if he were to be confirmed. But right now, I haven't seen any indication that his confirmation will move through to a full Senate vote yet. I think Senator Joe Manchin has expressed concerns with him privately. And I'm not sure about the two Arizona senators and Mark Warner, but there has been some opposition to him on a bipartisan basis as well. But those are kind of the the two things that people should be aware about.
Yeah, but when it comes to him, we're talking to Gabrielle Hoffman about labor issues. When it comes to him, even if he's not confirmed, this goes to what you were talking about, about how power works when we're dealing with labor and how the government and big unions and the workforce and workers themselves all meet because most people probably have never heard of the wage and hour division of the Department of Labor, but it's these kind of bureaucratic administrative postings, their appointed positions, so they have to go through a view theoretically, that's through our representatives, but let's not get into all that right at the moment. Uh that that's a position that has immense power when you start talking about things like the gig economy, doesn't it? So just explain for a second, though, this is this is really important that it sounds kind of like, oh, well, this is just a government posting. No, this really, really matters if you're trying to be an Uber driver, or if you're trying to work for Amazon as a third-party carrier, or pick whatever you want, freelance writing, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, if he were to return back to the agency, especially with his animus towards it, I think that presents a huge conflict of interest. You're supposed to be a neutral arbiter. If you're presiding over lawmaking or rulemaking in this capacity, you should have someone who's more fair to it, who hasn't written against the gig economy or called for its it's it's quashing. In a sense, I like I said, I think a lot of these regulators in the Biden administration and those in the agency side just are denying reality. Like I said, they have a huge disconnect between the workforce and kind of special interests or kind of the the concerns that they're hearing. They still kind of view labor law in the lens of the 1930s. They think that there's bad workplaces, things are dirty, people, workers are dying, and that there has to be a huge remedy, a big sweeping remedy to these problems. But they're taking maybe uh some case studies. And certainly there are some concerns. I know people have heard about Amazon. I I've I've seen about some of the working conditions there. I can't really weigh in on it because I don't know exactly if it's true or not. But I know a lot of people, even some on the right, have said, well, Amazon kind of exploits their workers and does this. And then you hear other people say, well, maybe this is a mischaracterization. Um but a lot of people have jumped onto kind of these bigger companies that have uh tapped into independent contractors because they want them to unionize. Although when workers at Amazon were presented the opportunity to unionize, especially in the Alabama plant, if I'm not misinterpreting that case, they actually overwhelmingly rejected efforts to unionize by like 70 something percent to 20, 30 some odd percent. So when workers are presented the opportunity to collectively bargain, they don't want to. And I think you even see some de-unionization efforts, too. There was a chicken poultry plant in Delaware that recently brought to a vote whether or not to continue to be unionized. And the workers ultimately decided to withdraw themselves from the union. So you don't hear those stories often. And certainly, you can cherry pick as to what stories resonate. You could say, well, this company's engaging in this egregious labor abuse. But what about the opposite, where labor unions are effectively tampering with business affairs and the workers who have the decision to unionize or not, they don't want to unionize. And they're not given the choice in some cases to reject unionization efforts if they're in a non-right-to-work state, or they decide to repeal uh unionization or collective bargaining agreements. So it could be framed in any way, obviously, but I think they're ignoring the fact that workers don't want to be, again, regulated in a one-size-fits-all approach. And I think people see because of the pandemic that maybe the traditional work framework, including union jobs, are maybe not suitable for people going forward. And I think what people fail to understand is, yes, while we may have some, I have personal gripes with labor unions, I think they have exceeded their power. Uh they're not really representative of all workers. In right-to-work states, they can exist. We see here in Virginia with powerful teachers' unions, even though we're a right-to-work state, they're able to exercise muscle and prevent certain policies from going into place. It doesn't mean they can't exist. It just means that you have to allow for people to to not want to unionize if they don't want to. And we want to have coexistence. I don't think they want to have coexistence with us. And that's probably a sinister look into the issue, but we can have coexistence. I don't think they're open to having coexistence with us because they view us as competition.
Yeah, and a fun thing to do wherever you are on this issue, uh I just trust me on this one. Go back and look at the labor wars with Walmart in the 90s and 2000s. Swap out Walmart for Amazon. It's the exact same talking points from the same folks. Just give you a little homework to do there. Okay, Gabrielle Hoffman, real quick, before we have to let you go, though, uh you have something else you work on. It's called the District of Conservation podcast. We joke about being DC being a swamp, but it really is a swamp, uh at least ecology-wise, before we completely built up every square inch of it and monetized it. But that also means there's quite a bit of wildlife in that area that people probably don't think of. Uh tell us about that podcast real quick, because I thought it was fun. I thought it was a nice take on it. I'm a country kid at heart. I love conservation. And I think, you know, we debate things like climate and environment. If we just do things like stewardship and conservation, that takes care of a lot of that without having to get into big words and culture fights. Tell us about the podcast, because I really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Yeah, I totally agree with your point there because I think even Republicans are guilty of falling into this climate trap. And it's not to say that climate issues aren't important. They are. But we're seeing a lot of disputing between the facts and data and healthy debates surrounding it. And I tell people, the way that you get people interested in environmental issues or stewardship by extension is talking about individual issues. And that's what we do at my podcast, District of Conservation. So it's obviously presented from the lens of me living in and around DC, but I don't just cover DC. I obviously make the connection that policy emanates from DC because what is decided in Washington, either in Congress or the Department of Interior or US Fish and Wildlife Service, that is carried down to the states and localities. And there's that connection going back and forth between those different entities. And I also mentioned the fact that in in hone on uh private efforts and free market environmentalism and volunteer efforts, public-private partnerships, not just the government handing down policy to encourage conservation. In the 40 years and 50 years that environmentalism has existed, we've seen kind of a top-down approach, especially carried out by environmentalists. But we now start to see free market environmentalism start to kind of dominate discussion. We see people calling for private stewardship. We start to see the acknowledgement of individuals as conservation stakeholders here in Virginia, West Virginia, any state. And I think it's important to talk about this. And I guess even introduce a conservative or libertarian perspective on this because it is kind of dominated by a center-left perspective. You often hear the left, environmental left, use conservation when it's actually preservation that they're arguing for. So we try to explore convoluted, difficult subjects and kind of make it easy and digestible for people who may be interested in energy, environment, conservation, hunting, fishing, shooting sports, because they're all in a related hunters and anglers are the primary funders of conservation. The Biden administration even acknowledged that, too. Uh although we do see some efforts from them, they're kind of engaging in doublespeak. They're giving an aw to hunters and anglers, yet they're trying to potentially revoke opening uh federal wildlife uh areas to more hunting and fishing opportunities, potentially engaging and soon settle with the Center for Biological Diversity. So we try to incorporate the dynamics. There are some politics. There's no politics in some instances. I bring on guests who are newsmakers, people who are up and comers, who have really compelling stories that off should be told because even in some of the bigger podcasts, you kind of hear a discussion about hunting and strategies for a good hunt, but you don't really delve into what prompts people to go hunting or fishing or to go hiking or to explore storytelling or something of the nature. So I like to kind of go beyond what most podcasts do and uh make it interesting. We don't stray away from controversial topics, but I I like to think that I offer a unique product and uh I appreciate you listening.
Yeah, and I keep telling our environmentalist friends, I was like, you know hunters are your natural allies if you just get over the gun thing. We'll talk about that some other time because well, that's true, because nobody cares more than those guys do.
Right.
Uh Gabrielle Hoffman, outstanding stuff. You told us about the podcast, but tell folks where they can follow you and what else you got going on writing and otherwise, as you traverse the face of the country back and forth like you have been the last few weeks.
Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, easy to find me, denoted by blue check marks, obviously District of Conservation, super easy to find on all podcast players. Uh my Young Voices profile, if you Google Young Voices and my name, you'll find my profile. And like you had talked about before we went on the air, you and I are side by side, so it's pretty easy to find me there. I also uh contribute to Independent Women's Forum as a fellow, so you'll find my work there. I write regularly for Town Hall. I do too much, so I hate talking about myself in this vein. Uh but all over the place, you can find me. No difficulty there. And uh thank you for speaking with me.
Yeah, and we'll definitely have you back. Uh you're a great guest, and I look forward to talking to you again in the future.
Likewise. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh welcome back to Herd Tell. I'm Andrew Donaldson. Thanks for joining us. You know, one thing, kind of a little bit of a pet peeve of mine is people who just act like social media is nothing but bad and technology is nothing but bad. It's not. Social media and the technology is a tool. It's like a shovel. You can use it to plant a really pretty flower garden, or you can use it to bury the body of the person you weren't supposed to kill. It's just a tool. It doesn't care which one. It's all on how you use it. Well, a lot of people use technology and social media for good. I know I do. This has become a great outlet. It led to me writing, led to me doing things like this show and getting to talk to you every day. So to highlight a good story out of Der Spiegel, that's the German newspaper, spiegel.de, and it isn't an English version, so you can read, young people from poor neighborhoods set out to conquer the digital world. And this is a story that comes out of Brazil. Um the famous favelas, I think I'm saying that right, but it's the very poor impoverished slum areas of Rio de Janeiro and other parts of Brazil. Very cool story, what they're doing. Folks, these are very drug-written areas, high crime areas. There's not a lot of hope, especially after the coronavirus pandemic. Most people lost the menial jobs they did have. So this is a cool story. And the story in Der Spiegel goes this way. There was a company that was running a business out of the central part of the city. And they were trying to find musicians and stuff. Well, this other guy came in, bought it out, and he discovered that what was needed wasn't really musicians. All these people were really into online video gaming and online stuff. So he developed what's called Afro Games. They began offering classes, this is from the piece, uh offering classes amid 2019. Since then, 100 students, starting at the age of 13, including 20 women and girls, have been learning to either program or game. It's their choice and also English. There are also examples of people breaking through without any external help at all. Young people from the favela are founding their own tech companies, conquering a domain from which they had previously been excluded. Down at the bottom, they talk about the guy that was focused at the beginning of the piece, and he explains it this way. Chantilly of Afro Games is naturally fully aware. He says, of course, we could also offer theater courses here, but what is going to happen to the people afterwards? What can they do afterwards? If a young person from the favela were to apply to a hotel, for example, and he or she can't speak English or turn on a computer, that person ends up as a porter. But somebody who's gone through the gaming training can say, I can speak English and I know how to use a computer. Then that person gets placed in reception. Luis Agostino, the streamer from the Vigario Geral favela, I'm sure I'm pronouncing that wrong. I apologize. My Portuguese is not up to snuff. Also didn't quite make it on the Afro Game professional team, but we didn't want to give up on him, said Chantilly. We knew where he would end up. He is delighted when Augusto walks into the entrance of Afro Games, wearing his ripped jeans, plastic sandals with deep circles under his eyes. How long did you play this time? He asked him, and he said, until five in the morning, he said, laughing. Augusto said he used to be completely nuts, hanging out with the wrong crowd. Many of his friends are dead. He said, there was so much drugs and crime. It was the only thing to do. Some were shot by police because they were involved in selling drugs or were just in the wrong place. I don't really go like going outside after all that, he said. So gaming's the ultimate escape, he said. And this is an interesting quote. He said he has accepted there. He has had contact with people from all over the world who see him as being one of them, who take an interest in him, who tease him about the pink mug with Disney princesses on it that he nicked from his seven-year-old cousin. He has created a character online who not only shoots, but who is also willing to talk to people. It's the world that Augusto can shape, one of which he isn't just left to drift. Quote, listen to this quote, "That's why I prefer this other world," he said with tears welling up in his eyes. "It's fairer." Remember, for some of us, internet's fun and games. It's a privilege. We get to pick and choose our problems online. We get to argue about things. For some people, not just the poor around the world, but folks that are disabled or folks that have social issues, the internet and technology is a godsend because it gives them an escape. It widens their world, and it brings the world to them where they are and makes them participants in it. Remember that the next time somebody complains about how bad social media it is. Might be for you, but for other people, it's an absolute lifeline. More Herd Tell right after this. Hi, welcome back to Herd Tell. We always end on a good note or a happy note. This is a fun one, as long as you're not scared of heights, of course. Out in Orlando, this is from WFTV9, ABC affiliate, Sarah Wilson wrote it, dozens of people strapped in and donned their helmets to take a 26 story trip down the outside of an Orlando hotel to raise money for charity. The fifth annual event as a fundraiser for Give Kids the World, which promotes vacations for critically year children and their families at no cost. Organizers sent out pictures of this. You have all these people rappelling down a 26-story building. It's a hotel. Uh they're strapped up. This is really cool stuff. If you're afraid of heights, it's not for you, but they're doing it, and they're doing it for a good cause. They raised $130,000 from the event at the Hyatt Regency Hotel in Orlando. So if you're not scared of heights, you want to raise some money for children, do a little rappelling. If you're really not scared of heights, you can always go to Bridge Day back home. That's only 800 some odd feet down. That'll do it for Herd Tell. We sure appreciate you checking out the program. If you missed anything from last week's or from the past, we keep talking about returning guests. If you missed the first time they're on the program, you can find them. Make sure you're subscribed to the YouTube channel or any of the podcasting platforms. You can go back and listen or watch any of the former episodes. They're all there. Also, if you're looking for a specific interview, anything labeled Good Talks, those are the interview-only portions. Appreciate all your support as we start yet another week in February here, trying to get to the end of the month, get on into March. Spring is right around the corner. Plenty going on. We're going to continue to turn down the noise on the news cycle, bring you the best information we possibly can. So until tomorrow, we hope you and yours are well. We hope you are well-fed. We'll talk to you tomorrow on Herd Tell. All the music on Herd Tell is provided under a Creative Content License from monstercat.com.